Ten o'clock, your worship.
Good morning, everyone. I call this Committee of the Whole Meeting Thursday, or sorry, Friday, January the twenty seventh, twenty twenty-three at ten AM to order and to acknowledge that we are on the territory of the Chehalis. Next order of business, please.
We have the presentation of the twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-seven draft financial plan by the finance officer.
Go ahead.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for joining. I'm very pleased to present the draft two thousand twenty-three budget council today. And we'll just get going on the presentation. So first thing we'll do is just run through a bit of a budget process timeline. And so this is really the beginning of the process. So we're here. And this is the introduction of the budget at the Committee of the Whole Meeting. And what the purpose of this is to really kind of give you the highlights of the budget. Counselors free to ask questions and debate and deliberate a little bit on what's in it. From there, any changes that might come up will go be incorporated. And then we'll put it into first reading. And then after the first reading of the budget bylaw, which is basically a financial plan, we'll advertise for open house and then we'll have a budget open house. From there, we'll complete the second and third readings of the bylaw, and then finally will be the adoption. So before looking forward, I thought we might take a quick look back to see how twenty twenty-two was. And just a note, we're still in the year end and audit process. So the numbers that we've kind of got in here are preliminary at this time. But yeah, twenty twenty-two, it saw both challenges and opportunities, as I'm sure everyone's aware. We saw kind of a gradual reopening to to what people say, I guess, is a new normal after COVID nineteen. Usage from municipal facilities increased and summer visitation remained very strong. We had a quite a wet spring. But once that passed, it was a beautiful summer, no smokes. So businesses and hotels were busy. A parking stalls were were well used. Our department was a very exciting year for them. They got a new fire truck. On the flip side, of course, as everybody's aware, we aren't immune to the inflationary pressures in the world is that the world is facing. So we saw exponential increases in utilities. For example, I'll just throw some numbers out. Utilities average increase, so it's twenty percent. Fuel for the vehicles averaged thirty percent increase. Disinsurance overall about a ten percent increase, employee benefits around fourteen. And chemicals and supplies for treatment plants went up over thirty percent. We also faced supply chain issues with basically shortage of material to to complete our capital projects. So we'll see and you'll notice later that many projects are being carried forward from twenty twenty-two into twenty twenty-three. And that's mostly the reason why. So looking forward now to budget twenty twenty-three. So when creating the twenty twenty-three budget, we we really tried to absorb as much of the inflationary pressures as we can, while still maintaining the same level of service that our residents expect. So for taxation, we are looking at about two point six million dollars. Business licensing is budgeted about twenty-eight thousand. Pay parking budgeted about three twenty-five thousand. Boat launch revenue twenty-five thousand. Curbside collection one forty-five. And grants about five hundred and eighteen thousand. What the grants are is consists of small community funds grant. The Community Works Grant, which is previously known as Gas Tax. And the LG CAP, which is the Local Government Climate Action Program, basically Green Initiative Grant. Looking at general expense highlights and just going to run through each of kind of the main silos that we have. So on the administration side, the wages, the collective agreement did expire, excuse me, on December twenty twenty-one. So that's currently in negotiations. For professional services, we have a couple of projects that are carried forward. The building condition assessment project, which is basically a new accounting standard that we need to analyze the condition of our buildings and identify any additional costs that we may face when the building is decommissioned. And mostly that's for hazardous materials, asbestos and whatnot. So that's a new standard that comes into play this year. So that was a carry forward budget item. Also, we have seventeen thousand carry forward funding for the collective bargaining consultant, which is again kind of in negotiations right now. And the Local Government Climate Action Plan, this was the funding identified earlier from last year. So this is going to be put into initiatives based on the Climate Action Plan. Technology IT support services. So that's basically a budget item about sixty thousand. What that includes is we have a complete accounting software program called MACE that controls everything from property taxes, utilities, business licenses, all the way to our financial process, right, right down to the financial statements. Zoom that we're on right now, bang the table, public consultation software, website maintenance and just general IT support. Look at the fire department. The twenty twenty-two operating surplus is estimated at approximately thirty thousand dollars. And what happens to that is it gets transferred into a specific capital reserve, which is earmarked for the fire department. And that's basically to on future equipment purchases. On the Protective Services side, the COVID nineteen grant funded summer policing ends. So basically, the COVID nineteen grant that we were given was basically done in twenty twenty-two. For emergency measures, the emergency planning agreement with the District of Kent continues as per the past. On the development side, we've earmarked thirty-five thousand dollars for general municipal engineering. For planning, general planning services of eighty thousand is in the budget. And then the we have a partial carry forward of twenty-one thousand dollars of the for the officially community plan to balance that. And that's funded by gas tax. On the public work side, we're really noticing a lot of our equipment is aging. So the obviously we're basing increased maintenance costs with that. So we've identified a couple of new budget items this year, just increased R and M budget for repairs on our public works equipment. And for building repairs and maintenance, this kind of ties into the asset retirement obligation that I spoke to earlier. We have a project for the remediation of the hazardous material in the public works building, so it's a carry forward project. Community services. We're looking at some indigenous infrastructure budget for about twenty-eight thousand. This is new. Mostly covered by RMI, so that's Resort Municipality Initiative, and then partially covered by taxation as well. So this is into the capital projects, and I'll kind of run through these at a high level. After the presentation, if you have any questions at all, we were more than happy to get into the details of the projects. First is the Spring Park Upgrade. So this includes the washroom, covered shelter, ping pong table and water fountain. This is basically was kind of started last year, but will mostly happen this year, five hundred forty thousand is carry forward. And it's funded by Parks DCCs, which is Development Cost Charges and Reserves. I'm just going to make a quick note. This number did change from the financial plan draft that was originally sent out. There was an additional funding of a hundred and sixty thousand that was not included in this. So this is the full carry forward amount. Moving on, the Fire Hall Edition is continuing, and the balance to complete that is two hundred and sixty-four thousand. The original budget was seven hundred fifty thousand. And this is funded by fully by grant. Hot Springs Road Drainage. Now I'll just touch on, you'll see in here when we identify grants that our application is in progress. What we have to do in order to apply for the grant is identify the project in the budget. So that would be two million dollars in the budget. Now, if for some reason the grant is not approved, we would not get the revenue, obviously, but we would not see the expense either. So it's a net zero to the budget. So on the Hot Springs Road Drainage Project, there's two million dollars identified. Again, this is to be funded by grants. Application is in progress and also partially funded by drainage DCCs. Moving on, the this project is to raise the wastewater treatment plant access road and dike. This is mostly, yeah, for the protection of our wastewater treatment plant with raising rising water levels. Estimated budget on this is about six million. It's a new item for this year. And this is to be funded by grant, and this application is in progress. Continuing on the capital projects, we have the boat launch and dock placement project, which is carried forward from last year, identified approximately twenty thousand dollars, and that's to be funded by reserves. The safety stairs to the flood pump and wastewater treatment plant. This is a safety issue, so it's quite important. It's carried forward and identified for thirty thousand dollars to be funded by the Community Works Fund, which is again also known as Gas Tax and Reserves. We're also budgeting for two bus shelters, which is a project between us and B C Transit for twenty-eight thousand for two, and that's funded by Gas Tax. Office equipment, this is a general budget item. It's kind of in each year. It's just identified for for general IT, computer replacements as they age and furniture replacements. And finally, EV station, so electric vehicle station match funding. This is something we're looking into different grants. And in order to get certain grants, some match funding is needed. So we've identified this out of Gas Tax. The Resort Municipality Initiative Program also funds certain projects. So we have a couple on the go right now. Part of our Beach redevelopment project that we're working on is actually pretty much done, is the Birm project. We're carrying forward a hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars with that. It was originally nine hundred sixty-seven thousand dollar budget. And this is balanced to complete. So that was funded by grant and RMI funding. Also, the Lagoon Walkway Project is just kind of in its early stages. Identified at about eight hundred and eighty-six thousand. It's carried forward. This grant application is still in progress, so it would be funded by grant and RMI funding. On the Tourism Infrastructure and Programming Side, we have the items within the resort development strategy, which includes such things as tourism, Harrison Events, the administration, rink, fire pit, boat launch, building renovation, as well as fountain improvements. The items on this list are unbudgeted capital projects. So basically, the items in here don't appear in the plan. They're just identified for discussion at this point, and if council wishes, we can definitely include them. So the first one will be the off-leash dog park. Now, this, there's a report forthcoming after this presentation on this. The amount is to be determined, but likely to be funded by Parks, DCCs and Parks Reserve. The sanitary lift station number one replacement. Again, there's a report coming right up on this. Amount is to be determined, funded by sewer DCCs and sewer reserve. We've also identified the need for public works vehicles. As I said, our equipment is aging. It's be approximately ninety-five thousand dollar budget. However, as you know, things are hard to get these days, so it would be a twenty twenty-four budget item. It'd be to be funded by borrowing. And I'll make a note on this, there would be no impact to taxation because the previous borrowing we did for Public Works Vehicle has now completed. So the basically the payment would just continue. Also, we've identified a need, or actually, it would be nice to have a snow blade for a Kubota utility vehicle that would assist in getting inside walks into smaller areas. That's about eight thousand dollars, and that would be funded by the Public Works Capital Reserve. Also, it's identified a walk behind sweeper would be approximately ten thousand dollars to be also funded by Public Works Capital Reserve. And this would be used, as you've noticed, Espinade is always sandy in the winter. So this would be this helpful in in keeping things clean. On the wastewater side, so just generally speaking, the wastewater utility, as you likely know, is operated on a cost recovery basis for the capital projects identified. Lift station number four, five and six needs upgrades, which would be six hundred thousand dollars for all three. This is a carry forward project, which again was not able to be done because of supply chain issues last year, to be funded by sewer reserve. Also sewer line repairs on macooms, cottonwood and cedar, approximately sixty thousand dollars. This is a new project funded by sewer reserve. Wastewater Treatment Plant Block and Pump Base, approximately forty thousand dollars. It's a new project funded by the Wastewater Treatment Plant Reserve. And a spare transfer pump would be forty thousand dollars and new project funded by wastewater treatment plant reserve. Continuing on the wastewater capital projects, some pumping controls would be twenty thousand dollars as new project funded by wastewater treatment plant reserve. This is basically to protect a piece wastewater treatment plant from being inundated with water inside. Centrifuge replace, sorry, centrifuge replacement. This would be identified in the two thousand twenty-four portion of the financial plan. It's a new project would be approximately two hundred and forty thousand to be funded by the Wastewater Treatment Plant Reserve, as well as another twenty twenty-four budget item is a hundred thousand dollars approximately for the resurfacing the membrane tanks. This is a new project funded by reserves. This final item is not in the financial plan. It's up for discussion, would be the replacement of a utilities vehicle. Again, our vehicles are quite quite aging. This would be approximately sixty thousand funded by borrowing, either borrowing or sewer reserve. On the water side, so same thing, the water utilities operate in a cost recovery basis. What we've identified projects is replace the gen set, so generator at the water treatment plant. These costs have went up significantly, but it's approximately one twenty-five, one hundred twenty-five thousand funded by water reserve. The water reservoir repaint and seal is in planning stages. This is a carry forward project funded by water reserve. The water treatment plant membrane replacement, I believe, is happening almost as we speak. A carry forward project funded by reserves and the Saint Alice Street Water Main replacement would be a hundred twenty-five thousand funded by DCCs. So looking forward, and there's a lot of information here, but basically what this is saying is is showing our budgeted general reserve contributions for twenty twenty-three. We budgeted at six hundred forty-six thousand dollars spread amongst the different reserves we have. On the water and wastewater side, we've identified two hundred thirty-three thousand for wastewater and two hundred and sixty-eight thousand for water reserve contributions to transfers from reserve. So basically, these are transfers to fund the projects that I just kind of spoke about. Would be reserve transfers out would be about one point four million dollars. And transfers out of DCC's development cost charges would be just over almost, almost one point one million. So let's talk a little bit about the tax assessment summaries for twenty twenty-three, and this is a completed role. It's still subject to change slightly. We'll we'll receive the finalized role usually about the end of March, and that will take into account any assessment changes. However, this is pretty accurate at the moment. Total assessed value of all properties is over one billion dollars. Actually, as an interesting note, this is the first year in village history that the assessed values are over a billion dollars. Non-market change. So what that basically means is is growth is approximately eight point five million. Overall increase to assessments two thousand twenty-two versus two thousand twenty-three was approximately a hundred and thirty, a hundred and thirty million dollars, which is about an increase, average increase of thirteen percent. If we look if and drill it down to class increases, it's quite interesting, actually. The residential class increased twelve percent this year versus thirty-one percent last year. However, the business class increased seventeen percent this year versus nine percent last year. On the recreational side, it was ten percent this year versus sixteen percent last year. So you can see it kind of flipped. Last year was a heavier increase in residential, and this year's heavier increase in in business. So yesterday we did Planning One-O-One. I thought we'd do Quick Tax One-O-One because it's much more interesting. Basically, as you may know, there's two components to property taxes. The one component is municipal municipal portion. And this is basically what funds or services for our residents. This is control. This is the only part of the property taxation that's controllable. The other side is requisitions and taxes from other bodies. So this is not controllable. What these requisitions are is is regional district requisition, regional district hospital, requisition, municipal finance authority, B C assessment, police tax and school tax. And then all of this together forms the complete property tax. So just looking at municipal tax requirements for twenty twenty-three, we've identified two point about two point six million dollar tax requirement. And this is ninety-four thousand dollars increase over last year. What that translates to is fifteen thousand of that will be covered by the non-market change, which is basically growth, properties and and tax base we didn't have last year. So that would leave approximately eighty thousand covered by current properties. Now, looking at ratios, again, there's a lot of information here, but basically, if we were to keep the same ratios as last year, so that's residential one, business three point seven six, and recreational four point seven two. If we take the average price of a property, that would mean the residential side would see approximately two percent increase in their municipal property taxes. Business side would see approximately six, and recreational would see approximately half of a percent. And this is flipped, as I alluded to earlier, because the the assessments kind of flipped between the classes. So this is kind of one scenario council can consider with setting the property tax ratios for this year. The second scenario would be to equalize the increase among the three classes. What that would do is obviously residential is always one. Business would go down to three point six one versus three point seven six. And recreational would go up slightly to four point seven nine from four point seven two. As you can see what that does, it equates to just over three percent tax increase among all classes. And on an average property, that would be residential about fifty dollars more per year. Business would be about a hundred and eighty-nine dollars per year and recreational about two hundred and thirty-six dollars more per year. So what ideally I would ask of council to say is to give administration a idea of what they wish to do with ratios. That way we can work that into the financial plan and bylaw moving forward. And that's it. So thank you very much for your attention, and we welcome any questions you might have.
Thank you, Scott. Questions? It's Counselor Passion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Mr. Schultz. Scott, in regards to the new vehicles, would they, would they be electric?
Thank you for the question. No, they're going to be, there'll be gas-fired engines. The intent is to start with small equipment and transfer that to electric, such as weed whackers, leaf blowers, that type. We're not, I think we're a little bit early in the stages for electric vehicles.
And my other question is in regards to the EV stations. Last month, I drove bought out a new grant applications where they would pay quite a substantial cost of their putting EV stations. It's a new program that came out for last week. It was in the municipal news.
Thank you for the question. I'll just defer that question to Michelle.
Through your worship to the rest of council, the local government climate action program has funding available to create a strategy, which we will be bringing a report back for council later on. The program is still early in development, and there's some more information coming from the ministry on this. So once we have that in hand, we'll come forward with a proposal for an EV strategy.
Thank you. Counselor Buckley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Got a few questions here. Hot Springs Road Drainage. I'm not familiar with what's going on now. That was before my time this time. I wonder if you could explain to me what's going to be done there for two million dollars?
Absolutely, through you. I it's, there's a couple of sections on Hot Springs Road that are experiencing, properties are experiencing flooding. As you know, twenty twenty-one was November twenty twenty-one, really highlighted deficiencies in our storm network. So there's a section, it's mostly south of Pine, where the infrastructure will be installed. The application was submitted, I think it was twenty twenty-one, we made the application. And we're still waiting to hear back from the Funding Authority, and I believe about four, five hundred and forty thousand dollars of our DCCs will be going towards be part of that two million dollars.
Would that be the part that the road is flooding?
That's correct, yeah. That's right. That will be be make part of the well, hopefully we can rectify that.
Okay, thank you. And, excuse me. The Dyke Edition for six million dollars, I've heard about it, but I don't know much about it. Is that the one we're going to raise it up a meter and come right along?
That's correct, yeah. It's in preliminary design stage. We're, we're, we only got it to the point where we can make our application. There's the the detailed design is, I mean, it's going to be a a challenge, and there's going to be areas where it's easier than others. And so considerations will have to be taken when when that if and when we are successful in that.
Are we committed to this project then so far? Or where are we, I guess, as I know you just said you just submitted for the grants. Is that correct?
Yeah, we're just at the application stage and they're reviewing. We haven't heard anything from the authority.
And one more here, safety stairs for the flood pump. I'm not aware of needing any stairs over there, so that's that's why I'm asking about that one.
Yeah, so that is something that was missed at the time when the flood pump was actually installed. It's a, it's a set of stairs that'll go down and then also a railing that'll go down to the intake of the flood pump. There's a trash rack down there that that is, well, captors debris keeps it from going into the the pumps.
Suction of the pump.
That's correct, yeah. And essentially, that's, it's just right now, they have to rappel down in harness, and it's, it's not an ideal situation.
Okay. The Lagoon Walkway Project, could you enlighten me on that one a little bit?
Through your worship to the rest of council, this is part of the twenty nineteen Lagoon Master Plan Project that was approved by council. There was public consultation. It outlined that the walkway is outdated, requires some widening, some accessibility upgrades. So this was part of the resort development strategy also that was approved last year.
Okay, thank you. And with that project, then, is there going to be any tree removal around the lagoon? Is that part of that? Or are you just building up the pathway for such?
The plan is to have a brush removal, especially on the interior lagoon-facing section of the path, and we're in environmental consultation regarding the rest.
Okay, thank you. Fountain improvements. What is that going to entail?
Good question. We are actually still waiting for CSA approval of lighting that we can actually change from the shoreline. Right now, it, we have to put a lens over the the lights. It's, we're still waiting to hear from the supplier. We just want to keep that bunch of item in there because then, of course, we can change it during candidate day, for instance, and we can change it red or whatever, whatever the initiative is or or day is, we can change it from the shoreline. initiative is or or day is, we can change it from the shoreline.
Okay, yeah, that would be good. Public Works vehicle that you're replacing for around a hundred K, which vehicle would that be replacing?
We're looking at, we have a nineteen ninety nine Ford that is one ton and we are looking to replace that because the maintenance costs are going through the roof with it and it's a heavily used vehicle during snow removal and or sorry, the times of of snow cold weather and during summer for watering.
Okay, and also the other utilities vehicle, is that for the Kubota?
There's there's two separate things. So the Kubota is a is looking for a blade.
The blade.
For snow removal. And the the utility vehicle is for the utility crew or we're staffed up to three full time crew members now. So and right now we're juggling vehicles between public works and utilities.
So this is an additional vehicle?
That one will be an additional and the one in public works will be a replacement.
And additional one, is it electric one then too or?
We're we're looking at gas options right now.
So I just like a regular pickup truck?
That's correct.
Okay.
The the challenge, I just want to speak to the electric vehicle. The challenge with the electric vehicle at this time, especially in the truck, the heavy duty trucks, we're looking for at about a one ton or if it's utility truck, it'll probably be three quarter ton is that the supply for them are many years out. So for us to purchase it now, if we were going to even purchase a gas engine or vehicle, we won't be seeing it until probably twenty twenty four. So that is something that I'd like to plan for in the future, but certainly for the light duty pickups, we can look at looking for electric options. However, at this time, we're not looking at that.
Okay, no, that's fine. The sewage line under the bridge, is it being moved to under the bridge rather than running through the Miami River? When this lift pump project, everything is going through, you said the different one, two and three were being upgraded?
No, it's not. We made an application for funding and I don't think we've actually heard back. I know we've been turned down a number of times. But that is not included in the the lift station one project.
Okay. And that's it?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Counselor Jackson.
I do your worship through you. Scott, a very, very fine program you put on today, very easy to follow. I really appreciate the effort that you've gone in to simplify what we're trying to absorb right now. I'm going to come at this a little bit different than I've been sort of tracking what's happening to Harrison. And what I don't really like is the shift from one category, the business category to the residential category. Residents now are paying roughly sixty six point five percent of the taxes. Business twenty eight and others five point two. Where we go back a few years, business was paying thirty six percent of the taxes. Now perhaps the rate at that time, the rate I use, the multiplier I use was twelve point one, because that's what it was in two fourteen. Now it's down to six point six eight. What I'm recommending is that we have Scott look at bringing back a scenario to us using the same rate that we used last year, which I believe was something like seven point seven eight or something like that. If you take a look at the assessments, the assessments for the actual bricks and mortar of the business buildings in Harrison has skyrocketed. Yes, residential's have gone up, but residential's now are on a decline where the property in Harrison, because it's so limited that we can't make anymore, it's here. Each every day that property is going to become more and more valuable as time goes on. So what I'm recommending is that we have another scenario given it to us, keeping that rate as it was last year. Until such time, we have a lot of capital projects going on here. And the introduction of the pay parking is a blessing. And each year it'll bring in more revenue. We have to become less dependent upon the provincial government. Because there will come a time in the not too distant future that they're not going to have as much money as they have now. I remember on council with the unconditional grants and when Mayor Fazio, one year we'd get a hundred and fifty thousand dollars and next year we'd be down to seventy five. So we were just operating on the shoestring, but we managed to do it at that time. So I'm very pleased with what is here. Perhaps as I said, we could put in a few thousand dollars for communities in bloom in case we can get that committee going. But other than that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Counselor Riddell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Most of my questions have been addressed, the questions from other counselors, but just one question through you to Michelle. The Lagoon Walkway Improvement. Correct me if I'm wrong. Will that be funded through R M I? And I know previous council, we had some in-depth discussions on whether or not to include a bike lane in that improvements. Can you kind of refresh my memory if that is a goal? Thank you.
Yeah, through you, your worship. The portion of the project is funded through the Resort Municipality Initiative currently.
Sorry, Rhonda. Sorry about that.
It's okay. Currently, we have just over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars dedicated to that, and we have a pending grant with the federal government for the remainder of the project. And because bikes are not allowed anywhere on the promenade or the Lagoon Walkway right now, that was not that did not come out of a public consultation that there is a desire for that. It had not been included in the plan.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Thank you, Scott. Yes, the presentation was well. I had a list of questions and answered ninety nine percent of them here. I just had actually one, actually a couple of questions, but Counselor Buckley was referring to a lift station three. So that's the the replacement going also across the the bridge there. So can you just, can you, could the operations manager just clarify, is there a grant application again in for that project?
That's actually, that was listed as lift station number seven. Lift Station Three is over on McCoom's Drive.
Okay.
Yeah, I am not sure of the status. I would have to come back with that.
But it is that there is a grant application in for it?
There was a grant application. I'm not sure if we've received a response from the funding authority.
Thank you. So I have just a just a just a simple question, really. How much money do we have in reserves?
Thank you, your worship. Our reserve balance is is quite healthy. So in total reserves, coming into two thousand two twenty three, we have approximately five point three million dollars.
Can you, could you have a breakdown of of the others?
Absolutely. It's quite a list. Would you like me to go through?
No, no, that's good. So is that five hundred and three thousand or five hundred and three million?
Five five point three million, yeah.
Five point, thank you. Five point three million. That includes all of the reserves, correct?
Yeah, so basically includes all of the reserves. It does not include what's sitting in surplus and also what would be sitting in development cost charges accounts.
Thank you. Just one other, another question, sorry for for the for Scott, please. The twenty twenty asset management plan. Can you tell me if that plan has been updated recently and how does this budget over the next five years correlate with that projected plan?
Thank you, your worship. That it's kind of a living plan. So it was, I guess, majorly updated in twenty twenty. However, as we add new infrastructure, we continue to adjust the plan. We also use the plan for our depreciation process annually as part of the audit process. So it is kind of updated. However, it's I attended a conference a few months ago on asset management and and we do, it's interesting, we do have a long way to go. But also we are light years ahead of many municipalities with with having a hard plan in place. Many don't. But what we do need to do is really, I think, flesh out that plan and get some hard dates and hard costs on replacement. Ideally, moving forward to you know, planning our reserves to replace these aging aging infrastructure in time, for sure.
I look forward to that. Thank you. Guess the so staff, I think, are looking for some direction as far as which scenario to go. Counselor Jackson, you you alluded to to what I thought was Scenario One. Can you correct me if I'm if I'm right on it, Scott?
Absolutely. I'm just going to flick this slide so our viewers on Zoom can follow along. So in Scenario One, I guess the the main difference and apologies if I'm not understanding correctly is the ratios versus the tax rate. So the ratios, as you can see, business is three point seven six and recreation four point seven two. So the the ratio basically means for every dollar of residential business would be taxed three point seven six percent more. Now, keeping the ratios the same, again, identify an increase as laid out. Keeping the rates the same as the prior year would be different. Because as assessment values increase, logically your rates would decrease slightly. So I'm more than happy to do a scenario, keeping the rates the same. But that would be kind of a third scenario.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Can you kind of help me understand what it is that you were trying to?
Yes, I use a different method of getting to the same. Last year, I believe the multiplier that I use was was different than today. So I realized the fact that the assessments are going up and I understand what Scott is doing, which is fine. I mean, that's the way we do it. However, we don't necessarily have to agree with that rate. We can continue the same ratio that we had last year, which is going to be, I I figure maybe another hundred thousand dollars in business tax. That's what I'm getting at, much needed for the village. However, it's up to council decision as to which which they want to do.
So I'm I'm counselor, I'm still trying to understand. So so can you or does that does that require staff to come back so that we can understand the dollar amount to change this?
Yes, your worship. I'm not saying we approve it. I'm just saying that what we should do is take a look at it. Because, you know, we need we need additional revenue. And my concern is that the ratio between the residents and the business is widening and the residents are carrying much more of the taxes. That's something that we should really be cognizant of.
So so we could actually call that then Scenario Number Three. We could call it the Counselor Jackson.
Scenario Number Three. Thank you, your worship.
Okay. So again, so staff is looking for some direction of which scenario to head, which way, which scenario we would like to head. So let's just start and we'll move I'll move the that we for Scenario Number One and then if there's any discussion on moving Scenario One. I'll call the question then all in favor of Scenario One.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Is this to come back again? I believe we have, we do this as a separate I was part of the agenda later on, not today, but at another meeting, the the tax rate I'm referring to.
I think Counselor today is actually asking for which scenario there there.
Oh, that's that one. Okay, because in the past I've come back, come back as a separate.
Yes, yes, that's what that's the direction I think that staff is looking for right now. So sorry, so. Okay, go ahead, Counselor Buckley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Scott. Scott, is there any, I guess you can't split screen. I would just, I didn't write it down for the scenario between one and two. I guess my concern, and I do agree with Counselor Jackson, we're trying to, you know, even out the taxation a little more, but I also know that our business community doesn't have the luxury of running right through the year as well, and they sort of have to make it in the summertime here. And whether or not their building is assessed it more, it's kind of like the people in San Francisco, and I read an interesting article on that, they can't afford to live there and pay the taxes. So the city of San Francisco actually goes back to when they had the houses back in nineteen eighty or something before the tax station went up, and I'm not suggesting we do that, but if you keep taxing the businesses because their building is worth more, it doesn't mean that their total income every month goes along with that. So that would be my concern. But I was just curious as to the amounts, I guess it was, and this is for number two, I see. So the amounts would go for the businesses down from about three seventy nine or something to one eighty nine. I guess I'm and our residential would be at fifty dollars. And yeah, so it's come down just about two hundred dollars in the business, so. I guess I'm all for Counselor Jackson's just to see that Scenario Number Three, but I think it would be a fair approach for me for the second one, because then everybody kind of takes the hit along the way. And without the businesses, our taxation would be a lot higher than what it is today, guarantee you that, so.
Thank you, Counselor. So you're talking about Scenario Three, right?
Well, Counselor Jackson wants to see Scenario Three, and I wouldn't mind having a look at it just to see what the numbers are, but my my position on this one is I would rather everybody sort of, it would be Scenario Two.
So before I go through all the different scenarios, Counselor Riddell and your thoughts on that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. During the COVID crisis here in the village, council spent considerable time. It became quite apparent that our business community really needed our support. So the multipliers were done and we adjusted them to provide our businesses with a with some support in taxes during COVID. If you can well remember during the height of COVID and at the beginning of it, we pretty well closed down the village and our businesses suffered tremendously. I'm tending at this moment to agree with Counselor Buckley. And I believe and I I'm going to ask of Counselor Fazio, I believe last year, Counselor Fazio, we kind of adjusted the rate to reflect more on evenness with between. We equalized it, yeah. Right now, my feeling is going with Scenario Number Two. I agree with Counselor Buckley that Scenario One does indicate quite a big hit to our business community. And I'm more in favor of adjusting it a little bit more equal, so. I support Scenario Number Two. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Riddell. Counselor Fassi, did you want to call the question, call the questions again? Okay, so I we started with the move for Scenario Number One. Okay, so I we started with the move for scenario number one. And I called the question, all in favor of scenario number one. Opposed? Number one, number one fails. So move scenario number two, do we need further discussion on scenario two? Ready to call the question, all in favor of scenario two? Counselor, our Counselor Buckley, Counselor Vidal and. And the mayor. So the motion. Passes. Do I still need to do number, no? Okay, okay. Next, uh next item, please.
Uh that would be a report of the Community Services Manager regarding an off-leash dog park.
Go ahead, Rhonda, please.
Thank you, your worship. At the January eleventh, twenty twenty-three, Committee of the Home Meeting Council directed staff to investigate and prepare a report with cost estimates for the creation of a basic off-leash dog park. To include fencing, gates, and a separate area for large and small dogs. Under two different parcels of land that were located on McCombs Drive and the vacant land north of the village office. The McCombs Drive location is a one-acre lot with plenty of trees for shade and rain shelter and is not adjacent to any homes. There is no parking on the east side of McCombs Drive, however, the location is directly can um connected to the McCombs Drive walking trail. And it's regularly used by dog walkers. On-street parking is available on Chestnut Avenue and additional parking spaces can be added to the community garden parking area to increase off-street parking. Some debris and underbrush would need to be removed as well as minimal clearing around the perimeter to install the fencing, but all effort would be made to leave the site as natural as possible. The vacant lots at Hot Springs Road and Miami River Drive. Uh there's two of them shown on your agenda, lots one and nineteen were purchased with funding from the Parkland Acquisition Reserve. And reserved strictly for park purposes. The remainder of the vacant lots are currently zoned P one for community use, which includes parks. However, these lots are commonly used for overflow parking during events, and there's no alternative planned for at this time. Staff has received estimates to dedicate approximately half an acre of this land to an off-leash dog park. And half an acre is the recommended minimum size. Uh community public wide consultation was previously done to gauge the interest and level of support for an off-leash dog park, however, at this time. Staff has not reached out to adjacent property owners of either of these. Uh parcels to see uh what their feeling would be about being impacted by such a park. Village has collected park development cost charges that may be used for the upgrades of new parks. And the costs are broken down in the chart shown here. So a total cost of approximately a hundred and five thousand dollars. At uh McCombs Drive to create an off-leash dog park and forty-seven thousand five hundred at the Hot Springs Road location. And. Uh the McCombs Drive, about seventy-five thousand would come from DCCs and thirty thousand from reserves. So the recommendation is that the off-leash dog park report of January twentieth, twenty twenty-three be received, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Fazio.
Move receipt, uh Mr. Mayor. And.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I would suggest that uh. We tell you, we we look at this a little bit further, maybe get some input from the public on the two locations that have been suggested. To see which is um. Which one they would like to see if if we go ahead with this project, but at the moment, I think the costs are quite high. More for one than the other, obviously, cuz of the locations. And that um. There's no immediate hurry, I don't. Don't think to move forward on this, so I would um just for now just to receive this and um look at maybe um. Putting on our website to see what feedback we could get from the public in regards to the two locations, thank you.
Uh thank you, Counselor Fazio, um yeah, Counselor Buckley, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh. Through you to Rhonda, Michelle, um I guess uh. When I had spoken with the operations manager, we had discussed a different area in overflow parking. Where to put this park, and I would like to know what happened with that area that we had discussed, and also at that time. Um I had explained that we could use a couple of large gates to open it up, so we could therefore use it for July first weekend or whatever. The dog park would be closed for that weekend, and therefore it wouldn't be. You know, in the road or whatever for the overflow parking, so we could still maximize use there. Also, it would not be close to any neighboring people at all, so there would be no uh. Yeah, what they're right here, there wouldn't be any effect on the neighbors for noise, et cetera. And also the parking, they would be able to park and the overflow parking. So it would be, I think, the least impact on this village. As far as going for also is cheap, and I looked at that uh the cost there for. Uh five K for signage and also fifteen K for benches, and I don't know what signage that we would need for five thousand dollars. But um I do know that other parks I've been to, there's basically uh use at your own risk place, all waste in bags. I don't know how they would cost five thousand, I'm not, I'm trying to be, I'm not accusing, I'm just asking in my mind. And also um uh for three benches, uh I think those could probably wait, I think people are more interested in getting out there and. Throwing the balls for their dogs and doing whatever, and uh. I guess in the meantime, they could probably bring a lawn chair with them, and uh I don't mean to be disrespectful, but I was hoping to get that pushed through on this budget. So they could use this, so if you could explain to me why it isn't going where it was originally. Talk about, thank you, and the rest of that, sort of.
Thank you, Counselor, just before staff answer that, uh Counselor Buckley, can you help me on that uh on the picture on the on the front of the page, page nine? Can you tell me um where, what area that you were thinking of?
I was thinking.
Lot two, three?
Uh.
Could you, could you use those numbers?
Um I would be utilizing lot four.
Four?
And uh going right up to almost the village office, but not close, like going south on the picture.
So basically, the one lot, lot four.
Yeah, and uh it would be, I guess, coming closer because there's two large cedar trees in there. And they would be used for shade, and then it would run closer to the office going south on Hot Springs Road. Um. If you can think about the office itself, just walking out in the field and then coming north of those two large cedar trees. And that would be right over in that corner where it wouldn't have any effect on anyone as far as noise-wise. And if by putting it up where it is, just on Miami River off of Hot Springs, right, you've got the people across the road, you've also got Harrisburg. Kitty cornering up to that, so you would have impact on the residents there, and that would not be something that I would choose to do. Um even if the people who live there today um say, yeah, no problem, you know, Aunt Mary can't hear or whatever their reasoning. Um I still think for future people uh that would want to buy in and houses do change hands, as we know, I think it would be a bad choice. Because you're just acting, asking for conflict future on down the road. Um so that would be my reasoning for that, and by opening it up so we could have that. For the overflow parking in Sasquatch Days or whatever we're gonna use, especially July first. It wouldn't have as big as uh an impact, because on that weekend, you could just close the dog park and open up with the two gates. To let everybody park there, so you wouldn't lose a substantial amount of parking.
So Counselor Buckley, just so I understand it too, but I'm just looking at this, at the little drawing here, and it's, it kind of shows the shaded tree. In between lots three and seventeen.
I don't know, I I guess that.
I can't tell from this drawing.
No, if that's in fact what that is.
Your worship, if I may, just provide some clarification, the 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 trees are in lot three, and what you're seeing is shadowing going across to lot seventeen, so the trees are in lot three.
Okay. Where I would be happy with having this run is as close to the sidewalk without being that close, but close to the sidewalk. Walking on Hot Springs Road and from those trees going straight south.
So you're talking then lot three and possibly lot four?
That's correct. And I don't know exactly where, cuz it shows you two there that aren't numbered. And then the works yard um over on the right-hand side, so on this diagram, I'm not sure exactly where that is, cuz I can't see the village. I know whereabouts it is, so there's two lots, or maybe you could explain that to me, Michelle. Um where those are and why those aren't lots, or is that? Like they look to be about the same size as the other ones.
Yeah, those slots are uh five and six, they're just not numbered on the diagram, they're also zoned P one.
Okay, and that would be where I would be interested in running is from that tree down along that side. On Hot Springs Road.
So can you be very, can you be specific on that, Counselor? Um you're saying lot three, four, five, and six?
I I was going longer than I was going wider.
Way longer, longer which way?
That way, south and north. So it would be coming from the tree. Um down towards the village office.
And you're talking about basically halfway.
You know, without having the measurements, um I didn't want to bring it right up to the village office uh that it would impact anybody working there. But reasonably close, it's still far enough away, so I don't know the exact footage um coming back. Um this diagram doesn't let me tell, but it would be, I guess, lot four and five, maybe five. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Um so coming down lot five and six, I guess, and maybe not all the way to six. Depending on where the village office sits, but I can't get a good look at it in this picture.
So again, Counselor uh Buckley, so you're talking now lot three, lot four, and lot five?
If that's where the trees are.
That's what, that's.
Yes, then I I was trying to encompass those trees.
Yes.
So for a shaded area.
Um again, just before staff answer the question, um I just have a comment on it here too. Um lot one and nineteen, which is somewhat what's been identified here. Um it's my understanding, now I got my pump stations, right, pump station seven. That's the future home for pump station seven, is it not?
It would be in the road right away, it wouldn't be inside the park.
I'm sorry, where where would it be?
It would be in the shoulder, it wouldn't be in the, I don't believe it would uh encompass the park.
So the other, the other, I mean, where Counselor Buckley is talking to me makes a lot of sense, it's furthest away from any home. It's accessible, lots of parking. It's um the overflow parking, the access, people can still use that that area um other than where the dog park is. I see it as a as a temporary dog park, it could be many years, it depends until we develop it.
That's correct.
But I think it's, it would be helpful if we kind of clearly identify the area that that uh that you're thinking about as the other option. Um and I just wanna make one comment on the McCombs uh drive one. Um that land, my understanding is in the agricultural land reserve. Um are we allowed to have a dog park in an agricultural land reserve, maybe that'll help make the decision? To the, yeah, to the corporate office? Officer.
Um I don't have uh an answer to that, we weren't looking at a permanent. Dog park as far as I know, so I don't, don't think it would be changing the use of the land as it currently exists.
Okay, so so we're not, just just so we're we're not too sure, then if we can actually have the dog park in the uh agricultural land reserve, then is that is that correct? Yeah, okay, okay, um. Go ahead, Counsel, Counselor Buckley.
One more thing, um the number comes out to, if you drop the fifteen thousand dollars for three benches, this number comes to thirty-two five. Which is much, much cheaper than the other option, and at that point. I don't know uh without talking to Mr. Schultz, if we could squeeze that by in this year's budget or not, but um. I wasn't trying to rush it, but I was just, we've been, we've been at this ad nauseam ever since I was first on council, and it would be nice to put it to bed. Um I think it's, as you said, a a good location for it, I I think people could use it and be happy with it, it's central, it's wide open. Um and it's not next to the school ground, it's not uh anything that requires a lot. Of upkeep, that sort of thing, the staff will still be able to get in there with their tractor and cut grass. Um so I really don't see a whole bunch of downsides. Thank you.
Uh thank you, Counselor Buckley.
Your worship, can I make a comment on the the budget, so uh unfortunately, this. Scenario had not come to my attention before in this exact location, and. Gates for vehicles to be able to drive through were not included, so that would have to be adjusted in a future report.
Thank you very much.
Counselor, Counselor Vidal. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um. I do share Counselor Buckley's uh comment on. Um we seem to have kicked around this issue for years and years and years. And I do think it is time to move forward with some location, it's um. Been brought to my attention by numerous and very many residents um that they do want a dog park. During the previous survey that was done, um I'm gonna ask a question of Michelle. When that survey was done, was um the overflow parking lot included as a location?
Uh yes, Counselor, it was included as the location, however, uh in the picture that you're seeing, just lots one and nineteen were included as a question. And this location was actually the least uh. The the users that took the survey were least interested in this location.
All right, thank you, um. I do know that uh the property off of McCombs, I believe, was the second favorite in the survey, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you, I am. I am in favor of of the property off of McCombs. Um it's my understanding, and we can get clarification on it, that um it is not in. Uh the agricultural land reserve, I believe it is owned by the village. Um but perhaps clarification is is needed. Um the reason that um. I favor that site is it is close to to residents. And. During the winter months. Um the ability for uh residents in in that area, which is the larger area where. Uh our residents live, um it is a a close access to them. Also, uh with the installation of the new McCombs walkway. I believe it would tie in very nicely um if access to the dog park was there. Um during previous discussions on this last council. Um I did indicate that um and council at that time favored um the absolute bare minimum. To be done to construct um a dog park. Um and at that time. I supported a comment that um. Putting in the very, very basics could be the responsibility um of. The village and council, however, should. Any of the users of the park want to look at any kind of improvements that. Perhaps that would best be done through um fundraising, fundraising efforts. Um one of the other reasons I do like the McCombs area property. Is that uh it seems more and more and more on weekends. The uh overflow parking lot is at times almost filled to maximum. Um. I. And 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 back to the to the trees, uh on the McCombs Drive property. There, I believe, um most likely, there would not need to be removal of. Considerable amount of trees, um to me, it appears, and you know. Will need to um get staff to investigate that, but basically, I think it would all just include. Um cleanup. I do like the idea of engaging uh residents uh close in both areas. Um to get the feedback uh prior to us making a a decision on uh. Where we go from here. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor Fazio.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um first of all, if I. Can recall with the previous council prior to the O C P moving forward that. We had first reading in regards to rezoning that land. Cause it's P at the moment, and that was pulled off by the council the day to the completion of the O C P. Uh from that, so I'm not sure whether the counselors knew that, that uh it got to first reading and then the the. The the parcels that we're referring to, the village lots. The village lots.
Go ahead, counselor.
Yeah, they they're the ones that uh that the that we purchased from the hotel many years ago. Uh with the idea of one day being a civic civic center there. So um there was discussions. Uh with the previous council for um looking at um. For the um seniors who wanted a downsize to um build something compatible for them there. And also, as we all know, the shortage of rental in Harrison as well. So that was put off, as I said, till the. By the council of the day, but they get the first reading till the O C P was completed. Uh I still think that um. We need to fine tune this, like counselor Buckley was just talking about the benches and this, fine tune it. And I think it still should go to uh on the website to get some input from the public. I think. That was one of the scenarios that a former counselor brought up that I should regarding the uh McCombs. That it should be a bit of a public consultation prior to moving forward ahead with that location. Um so I think it's uh it's here for receipt and I think it's um it should come back to council. When it's been fine tuned and maybe get a better um. Size and map of the exact um area that counselor Buckley has brought uh brought to us. In regards to that lot. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Buckley.
Thank you. Um in response to counselor Vidal, the only downside I see to the one. That is off McCombs is the maintenance. Um I did take the time to drive over there and have a look, and if it's right opposite our garden plots is that it's solid bush in there. And uh to keep, you know, the the branches and the debris from all the trees. Um I think that's going to be an extra burden on maintenance staff uh who are already overworked from what I understand. And uh with the other one, it may not be perfect, but at least you can run in there and put the mower down and cut the grass and do whatever. Uh I also don't know without clearing out anything how you could ever throw a ball for a dog. And uh not have him trip over something unless you totally clear it out in there. Um and most dogs parks that I've visited, I don't use them, but I have visited by them walking. And a lot of people are out there with their little red flexy things that are flipping that tennis ball through the air. And I I think that would take away from that, and I think the dogs would be busy looking in the bush and. You know, that that's the only thing I would think. Uh any other dog park I've ever seen anywhere is pretty much wide open. So they can get out there and exercise them. Thank you very much for that. And through you to counselor Fazio. Um from what I understand, what you were saying about that property, it was I'd understand that you were looking to sell those lots. Uh but the reading didn't go through uh because of the O C P.
Wasn't the selling, it was to rezone it.
Okay.
Pardon?
Were they not rezoned?
No, that's still P, it's still public uh in the in the zoning.
Okay, but they were all these lots.
Service lots.
Yes.
No service lots, but at the moment on a, in our zoning, it's a public institution like a civic center or hall or whatever the case may be.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the zoning at the moment.
Okay, and uh yeah, so it's zoned, but they aren't specifically, they're just still lots.
Yeah.
Yes, okay. Um because, and I will make a little plug here. Uh once we sell that land, it's gone. And uh we really have to be careful going forward uh with what we do with a piece of property. Because when I sat on the tourism board, we did nothing but figure out ways. To bring people into this village and to not have any place for them to park, to me is just ludicrous. So I feel very strongly about this one. I think we really, really have to think about this. Um because it's like inviting fifty fifty people to your house when your house fit twenty. It just doesn't work. And I think we'd be looking for more interaction between the neighbors and parking and everything else that goes with it. So I'll just mention that. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Jackson, would you like to?
Yeah, thank you, your worship. Um. This item has been kicked down the road since two thousand and six. Every council agenda has this. We tried. A dog park. We set it up. It didn't work. The dogs didn't get along and the mess left behind and the noise was incompatible to the residents, so we abandoned it. My concern is, I'm just sitting here thinking, we're spending more time on this than we did on the financial report. In the long run, you know, if I I agree, if you want to put a dog park, that we're counselor Buckley saying. Then do it and see how it works out. Nothing's perfect. But we're never going to get any progress if we keep referring it back and referring it back. We'll be talking about this in three years' time. So I would recommend that count, count the administration, look at counselor Buckley's idea. Come up with a plan and refer and get it back to council when it's appropriate and when they have the opportunity.
Thank you, your worship.
Thank you. Further discussion. Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, then now uh put forward a motion that uh we have. Uh for the public engagement to be on the website um prior to any um.
But I'm gonna just cut you off, counsel. There's a motion on the table already just to receive. Um so we're just, we were just gonna do, we were just talking about it. So let's receive it first and then you can put your motion forward.
All right, was the motion to receive passed or have we voted on that?
So there's a motion on the, can, so I'm just gonna.
Thank you. I'll delay my uh motion then. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. So um. It was moved by counselor Fazio that the report be received. Um call the question, all in favor of receipt passes unanimously.
Thank you. Then I'll put a motion on the table that we um direct staff to seek um. For the public engagement uh via the website or whatever is appropriate. Um and also to um canvas. Um surrounding properties, um looking for their feedback on. Either two of the identified locations. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Uh discussion, counselor Buckley.
Excuse me, that motion was to have the new drawings of not the, not the ones that are currently on the page.
All right, counselor Buckley, you're directing towards me?
Yes, um for not, not lot number one or nineteen, it was the ones that I had suggested.
Yes, the ones that you.
We're talking apples and apples here.
Yeah, the ones that you have identified also. Thank you.
Further discussion, call the question, all in favor. Passes with the mayor opposed. So just to clarify that motion, are we clear with that motion, Rhonda?
Yes, that staff be directed to do public engagement and canvas adjacent properties regarding a dog park on lots three to five in this diagram. And the McCombs Drive property.
Thank you. Okay, uh maybe we should have a recess. I'm sorry.
One, one further thing, Mr. Mayor. Um if I could meet with uh maintenance manager. And just go over there and maybe bring our, or we could step it out just to actual feet uh rather than acreage in size. And uh that way we could put that on there as well, and I'd be happy to do that with you, just so I could get a feel of how far that ball is gonna flick. At uh earliest convenience, I guess, wouldn't make things. So if you let me know what your schedule is, I'd be happy to show up there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, counselor. The corporate officer.
I'd just like to offer that this is uh since I would be bringing the report back, I would appreciate it if I could meet with you. Since I will be bringing the report back, I would appreciate if I could meet with you for additional information.
That would be great. I uh would like to meet just so we get the dimensions correct, so we can get an actual uh price that would be pertaining to. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, sir. So we'll call for a ten minute recess? Yes, okay.
You just call for the next item on the agenda when you're ready?
Say again, sorry.
When you're ready to resume, just call for the next item on the agenda.
Just the next item, please. Corporate officer.
That's a report of the community services manager regarding the parking master plan recommendations for pay parking.
Go ahead, sir.
That would be uh myself.
You too, sorry.
So this report is to consider the expansion of the pay parking program according to recommendations in the twenty twenty two parking master plan. So at the January twenty eight, twenty twenty two committee of the whole council received a parking master plan dated January nineteenth, twenty twenty two. Excuse me, that identified a shortage of sixty parking stalls in the peak parking areas. The parking plan states that we have a shortage of parking inventory in the waterfront area, but an overall system utilization rate of thirty three percent. Meaning that there is sufficient parking supply throughout the village, but an excess demand in the waterfront area. The study also suggests that parking prices can be used as a demand management strategy. And for every one percent increase in the price of parking, we would see a decrease of thirty point three seven percent in parking demand. In addition, staff has looked at similar tourist destinations and is recommending the falling rates to be implemented in twenty twenty three. No change to the short term zone and in zone to five dollars per hour and twenty dollars per day. The parking study also recommended expanding the pay parking area to Lilawatt Avenue west of Hot Springs Road only and include that in the short term parking zone. Cedar Avenue and Maple Street south of Lilawatt Avenue. Staff is recommending, or staff is estimating that this expansion would add thirty seven short term stalls and sixty nine. Long term stalls to the pay parking program resulting in approximately forty thousand dollars annual net revenue based on twenty twenty two actuals. The estimate includes the creation of twenty parking stalls by removing the grassy boulevard on the south side of Lilawatt Avenue and installing angle parking stalls. Angle parking would also be implemented on the east side of Maple Street, north of the canoe launch. The associated costs would include clearing the grass boulevard and installing gra- gravel and curb stops. Line painting would be required at laneways and no parking areas on all affected streets and additional signage would be posted. The parking study also recommends that the boat launch parking rate be harmonized to the long term pay parking rate. There are currently seven time limited stalls on Lilawatt Avenue adjacent to the post office and staff is recommending that this be reduced to four stalls. So there's a number of recommendations before you today and uh your worship council may wish to go through these one by one, but I'll just read them out. Um the first recommendation is that zone two long term pay parking rates be set at five dollars per hour and twenty dollars per day. The second recommendation, that pay parking program be expanded to include Lilawatt Avenue west of Hot Springs Road in zone one short term parking. The third recommendation, that pay parking program be expanded to include Cedar Avenue and Maple Street south of Lilawatt Avenue in zone two long term parking. That the boat launch parking day pass be increased to twenty dollars per day. That the time limited parking stalls on the north side of Lilawatt Avenue be reduced to four. And that up to fifteen thousand dollars be authorized to implement the recommendations in the parking master plan recommendations for pay parking report dated January twentieth, twenty twenty three. To be funded from surplus. Thank you.
Thank you, Rhonda.
Move recommendation, Mr. Mayor?
Or recommendation you're wanting, I think we should separate them.
Okay.
Um so let's, let's go one at a time. So item, uh the recommendation number one, that zone two. The long term pay parking rates be set at five dollars an hour and twenty dollars a day. Discussion. Counselor, counselor Buckley.
Thank you, uh through you to Michelle. Can you tell me uh what the current uh long term pay uh parking rates are right now? That are gonna go from up to five dollars and twenty dollars a day?
Yeah, we're at three dollars per hour and twelve dollars per day currently.
Okay, so a pretty significant jump. And also, um I guess we're just talking about number one?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
So I'll stick with that then. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion, counselor Vidal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to Michelle. Um. You indicated in your report that you had um. Kind of canvassed other tourism. Communities. I'm just wondering what those were, if you could give me kind of just an idea. Thank you.
Um I looked at uh White Rock, Tofino, Cultus Lake, Whistler. Uh the 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 prices are are all over the place and some of them have different rates for weekdays and weekends. And I also spoke with our uh enforcement company who helps come up with this suggested rate based on uh other. Areas that they've looked at. Uh one more thing to add, I also looked at other private parking lots within Harrison Hot Springs. One charges twenty eight dollars per day. For their uh non uh hotel guests to have valley parking there.
All right, thank you. Um. I'm in support of the recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Further discussion, counselor Buckley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um I guess where I have the problem, are we looking just to do this for revenue? Is that? The reason that we're doing this uh or to bring equalization across the board, or I guess where did this come from?
I get through you, your worship. Uh as I mentioned, it's in the parking master plan that we could use this uh as a demand management strategy. So for two reasons, one, yes, it would increase revenue, but two, it would push people uh out of the peak zone. Throughout the rest of the system, parking system that we have, so we wouldn't have as much congestion. And uh our parking in the boat launch area is also very congested, so we would be using this as a demand management strategy.
Okay, so if I'm to understand this, if you charge people more, they don't want to be as close. They will look for something back a little farther. And I guess what I'm saying with this one is this long term um parking. I guess that's not gonna be, is that gonna be on Maple here as well? I have to look back here again, where you want to go in here and put all the new stalls. Is that gonna be long term parking or short term parking?
Uh Maple Street would be part of the long term. The only part that would be included in short term is Lilawatt uh west of Hot Springs Road where the businesses are.
Okay. And you're gonna run um Cedar Avenue all the way down towards the big hotel? Is that correct? Okay, so all of Cedar will be in here. Um. I don't know. I I just uh, I know we've had a lot of complaints uh in the past about pay parking. And of course, nobody's happy to pay parking. I realize that and we do get a wonderful um amount of revenue from it. But um going up eight dollars a day is a pretty significant jump to me, uh regardless of a master planning. I've got to live here. I've got to have the people to walk beyond, you know, beside me on the street and say, why did you vote for this? And uh I can't think of one reason that I would. Um when it just comes to revenue over people, um. I I know when we brought this in way back when it was about fifty fifty and people still grumble about it to this day. And I understand the grumbling, but uh I would not be in favor of raising the price. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. If I can just, just make a comment on that one, um would your thoughts change? Would your thoughts change if the residents or not just residents, but the members that were taxpayers had a deckel that they had free use of the parking?
We discussed that when we brought it in and it's been my experience having lived in two zones. I once lived by a hospital and the other was the university in Edmonton, Alberta. And what I found, there was a lot of stickers that were on those cars. But those stickers also gave them to access to everybody else. And what my concern is here is that when the kids come to town, they take grandma's car down to the beach and they can sit here forever. And the reason we do this is for the revenue to pay for the beach upkeep and everything else that goes along with it. So by supplying free stickers, I would not be in favor because it will be, I'm not saying in every case, but I know human nature. And here, take my car. So I would not be in favor of that one.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion, Counselor Fazio?
On that note, Mr. Mayor, which you've just brought up. Maybe this is not the number one, but anyway, I'll throw it out there, is to maybe add maybe two or three more fifteen minute parking for pickup from the restaurants, which would be, which would help. And also, I think a place like Maple Street behind us where the hall is here. It starts to be paid for, but they could add maybe another two or three disabled parking as well. I think we need a few more disabled parking spots added. And it's tough to pay for the pay parking, but I think it should be, we should add with the, the our operations team, I would like them to look at that to see if we could add some more disabled. Maple behind us here is a perfect location. It's close to getting onto the beach. And it's, I would like to see that if it's possible, but that's direction to the, to the staff on that. It's not part of this, this number one, I know.
We're just looking at the rates right now.
Yeah.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion? On, so recommendation number one, again, that zone two long term pay parking rates be set to five dollars per hour and twenty dollars per day. And call the question, all in favor? Opposed, Counselor Buckley, opposed motion passes. Next item, number two. That the pay parking program be expanded to include Lilawatt Avenue west of Hot Springs Road in zone one, short term parking. Discussion.
Moved, move that number two?
Okay, I actually, okay. Moved by Counselor Fazio, discussion. Any discussion on item two? Ready to call the question? All in favor? Passes, motion passes unanimously. Item three. Sorry. That the pay parking program be expanded to include Cedar Avenue and Maple Street. So it's a Lilawatt Avenue in zone two, long term parking, moved by Counselor Fazio then? By Counselor Fazio, discussion?
Yes, sir. Just to clarification from the staff, please, through you, Mr. Mayor, is that the just clarifying for me when you mentioned Maple Street, because is it Cedar up to the corner of Maple Street where canoe cove is, Maple Street where the fed and breakfast is, is a wide enough? Just, excuse me, son, excuse me, excuse me. We have staff here. Thanks very much.
There is a small section just at the south end of Maple Street before the canoe launch that can be turned into angle parking.
Thank you. Further, further discussion, Counselor Jackson?
Thank you, Worship. I have a bit of a concern about Cedar West. We still have the construction of the seven story building going on. There's a lot of workers that come every day. Right now they're able to park their vehicles and not have to pay well. It may be finished by May or June, so I would be happy to see Cedar Street right now temporarily out of the parking. So allow these young people to come to work in Harrison. They have a place to park. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Fazio.
Excuse me, Counselor, if I may, I think where the construction is Lilawatt West. Not the Cedar. No, there's no construction there. There's just Lilawatt. Yeah, sorry, just, just to clarify that.
Operations manager, sure.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to speak to the one twenty Espinod Construction comment you made early on in the very early stages of their construction. It was encouraged for them to park on Lilawatt East and shuttle in. So they understand that there is pay parking around the site and, you know, it's councils wish to expand it, they'll have to accommodate.
Thank you. The corporate officer, did you have?
No, just trying to get your attention.
Thank you. The, any further discussion before I call the question? Can I call the question? That pay parking program be expanded to include Cedar Avenue and Maple Street. So it's a little whatever you in zone two, long term parking, all in favor? Opposed. Motion passes with the mayor and Counselor Jackson opposed. Next item for, so yeah, so I'll just move it. I moved that the boat launch parking day pass be increased to twenty dollars a day. Discussion. Counselor Buckley.
Thank you. What through you to, what is the current rate over there?
It is twelve dollars and it was recommended on our Parking Master Plan to be harmonized with the long term zone. Otherwise, people will take advantage, people who are not boat users will take advantage of that.
Gotcha. Thank you.
The other discussion, Counselor Vidal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to Michelle. I know there was some discussion about the actual boat launch fee. Is that under consideration here at all?
Not in spite of this report now.
All right, thank you.
Further, further discussion? I just have a question. I'm not just, I'm not that familiar with the, the boat launch there. So, so the, the twenty dollars a day. That's the angle parking that just continues on as part of the roadway. What about the parking in which has got the gate across it where the ice rink is? Is that still twenty dollar a day? Or is that part of people's permits to actually utilize the dock?
So there is one parking stall included with your launch fee. If they have an additional day or an additional vehicle, they can buy additional parking.
So this twenty dollars a day would be for any of those stalls? Thank you. Any further discussion? Ready to call the question? The boat launch pay, that to boat launch parking day pass be increased to twenty dollars a day? All in favor? Opposed. All to everybody, so passes unanimously. Item five. That the time limited parking stalls on the north side of Lilawatt Avenue be reduced to four. Discussion. Counselor Vidal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just some clarification from Michelle. Are we looking specifically about designated post office parking stalls?
Yes, those, the stalls that are just in front of the post office.
Thank you, though. I I do feel that those parking stalls are there for parking to residents to be able to access the mailboxes and conduct whatever business is necessary in the port, actual post office. Often, when I drive down to pick up my mail, quite often those stalls are full. So I think to limit them to four stalls is not appropriate. I'm, I'm not going to support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion, Counselor Fazio?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to counter by those comments on there. Unfortunately, there's not all residents that park there. It's, it's residents from the adjoining hotel that parked there. And I actually had to be at the front desk there a year ago when the, they were telling people, you can park for free on the street across the road. And I said, no, you can't do that. But it is often used by, and I believe if we look back onto the bylaw enforcement ticketing, you will find that a number of tickets are given out of hotel or I should say accommodation, sorry, people parking there. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Ready to call the question? So that the time limited parking stalls on the north side of Lilawatt Avenue be reduced to four, all in favor? Counselor Fazio. Opposed. Motion fails. With Counselor Buckley, Counselor Jackson, Counselor Vidal and the mayor opposed. Number six.
Mr. Mayor, if I could ask a quick question here. I've never done this before in my illustrious career. But I have felt that on number three, I would like to change my mind and I don't know if we can recall this and take a vote again, but I'm not in favor of expanding that. I don't know what I was thinking, but obviously not much. I don't know the process or procedure or even if it's allowed, but if it is allowed.
The mayor can, I can, I can pull it back. The, if you'd like to, I, I would be happy to pull that one. So I will go through number three. So this is that the pay parking program be expanded to include Cedar Avenue and Maple Street, so it's a little bit avenue in zone two, long term parking. All in favor? And opposed, which is Counselor Buckley, Counselor Jackson and myself, motion fails. So that one goes from a pass to a fail.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Item number six. That up to fifteen thousand dollars be authorized to implement the recommendations in the Parking Master Plan Recommendations or Pay Parking Report dated January twentieth, two thousand twenty-three to be funded from surplus. Discussion. Counselor Buckley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Michelle. Where the boulevard, the green space is going to be taken up? Is that just over here by canoe cove? Or if you could enlighten me on where all the digging is going to be?
So there's a, just to the end of the property that's on the corner of Lilawatt and Maple to just the, the street where the, the corner where it turns into Cedar Avenue, there's about seven to ten stalls that will be placed in there.
Okay, thank you.
Further, further, any discussion? We're ready to call the question. That up to fifteen thousand be authorized to implement the recommendations in the Parking Master Plan Recommendations for Pay Parking Report dated January twentieth, two thousand twenty-three to be funded from surplus, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Do we, do we need a recess or would we like to? Would we like to carry on? Okay. So next item, this is the report from the operations manager.
Thank you. This is the discussion, replacement options for sanitary lift station one. Sanitary, sanitary lift station one is a primary lift station that pumps villages sued to the wastewater treatment plant for treatment. Lift stations, pumps, piping and associate electrical equipment has reached the end of its useful life and now requires replacement. The three existing sewer pumps and lift station one are outdated technology that is increasingly more difficult to find parts for and repair. Replacing these pumps with the proposed new superior pump type will be able to increase discharge rates as needed. Provided greater relied, providing greater reliability and adding to the continuity of the other village sanitary lift stations. In addition, during power, their power outage, lift station number one relies on the backup power generation from an external source. Staff is recommending that a new generator operated and maintained by the village be added to the lift station number one to increase reliability of the village's critical infrastructure. For discussion, village staff engage weather engineering, want to know the engineering and Geo West Engineering, prepare preliminary design and cost estimate for two options. One, a retrofit retrofit of an existing, of the existing lift station and a complete replacement of listish of the lift station. Option one includes a, the, the retrofit would require a complete overhaul of the existing lift station, including new pipe pumps, piping, electrical system and see the addition of the generator for the lift station to function during power outage. The retrofit design will reuse the existing wet well. Eliminate confined space entry by removing the existing valves and flow meters from the pump chamber and place them at an at grade vault. There's a list of items that will be achieved during the retrofit. I won't go through them all. They're in, on your thing. And the construction cost estimate for this project would be one point zero three million dollars. Option number two is the complete replacement of the existing sanitary lift station would include a new wet well, electrical system, new piping, new pumps and a new generator. This new configuration would eliminate the confined space entry as well. This option requires de-watering and a very large excavation and extensive shoring to install the new wet well and reconfigure existing sanitary sewer piping. And listed in your package is what would be achieved under that project and the construction cost estimate for that is approximately two point three million dollars. Engineering deal to detailed design tender construction services will cost for either project, maybe a little bit less if we go with just a retrofit. For the engineering services from weather engineering will be forty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. The electrical mechanical engineering services for want to know the engineering would be thirty-five thousand dollars. Geotechnical engineering from Geo West Engineering would be approximately ten thousand dollars. So the options in front of council is to retrofit lift station number one as detailed in the sanitary lift station number one replacement report dated January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three with the assembled engineering team of weather engineering, LLP, want to know the engineering and Geo West Engineering at a cost of up to one point two two five. Sorry, one point, one million, one hundred and twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars to be funded by sanitary sewer DCCs and sanitary sewer reserves. Option number two is for replacement of lift station number one as detailed in sanitary lift station replacement report, January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three with the assembled engineering team of weather engineering, LLP, want to know the engineering and Geo West Engineering at a value of up to two point, sorry, two million, three hundred and ninety-two thousand five hundred dollars to be funded by sanitary sewer DCCs and sanitary sewer, sewer reserves.
Thank you. Discussion, Counselor Buckley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you, Mr. Cook. Can you tell me where lift station number one is physically?
Yes, it's at the west end of Cedar Avenue.
Okay, that's the one that butts right up to the hotel?
That is correct.
Okay. Can I ask, what is the prize for going with option number two versus number one? I noticed we're using the same pumps and both in the same flow meters for the extra million dollars plus what would be the prize in using number two?
The, what you would be doing is abandoning the existing lift station and creating a new up to date, larger lift station that could provide more capacity if there was ever a failure in the lift station. It's, it would be made out of fiberglass. Uh, it's, it would be made out of fiberglass, so it's gonna last uh for another hundred years.
And what would be the life expectancy of a retrofit?
The retrofit, that's a good question. I don't know that. Uh, the retrofit will require some uh. Uh, work to uh help the, like to reline the existing wet well because there is, is some deterioration. It's quite old. It was, it's over thirty years old. Um, so there's gonna, it, it's gonna need some work. Um, so. That, that, that was included in the, in the cost estimate.
It was?
Yes.
Okay, and uh, what is the difference in size of the, you say with the new wet well versus the old one? Would we be doubling capacity or?
I don't have that number in front of me.
Okay. I was just trying to figure out, uh, because there's quite a difference in price, so.
Yeah, the, the, the largest difference obviously is the wet well, but it's the geotechnical and excavation. The de-watering, uh, it wasn't realized until uh. Partway through the design process that the water groundwater level is quite high there. And we'd be going uh up to fifteen feet into the groundwater table. Uh, in order to be able to de-water that, that would be, that, that's where most of your uh expense is gonna be, is the de-watering. And obviously excavation and geotechnical considerations for showing. So uh, it would be quite a large excavation, be able to do this. So that's the difference between the two prices.
Okay, and can you maybe explain to me what happens? You said there might be not enough room in the event of a failure or something? When you were talking about the other wet well would be larger in scenario two versus one?
It would, there's potential to provide uh more capacity, uh, depending on the design route that we go. Uh, but it's um, right now, uh, if there is a failure at the uh lift station. Uh, we do have some storage capacity in the existing wet well as well as the uh pipe in the street. It's, it's for a short period of time, but we do have capacity.
Would that be something that would impact us that we could not get that going? And would that just be a failed generator then or something like that?
It would be a pump failure. Uh, as mentioned, the pumps are, are uh outdated technology. And uh, we did have a failure uh, a year and a half ago. And um, it had to be sent away to uh be repaired and there is no replacement for that exact pump type.
Okay, and um. If the pump, there's just the one pump, I see. Do we currently have one if we were to go? Because they're both the same pumps for the one and two scenario here. Uh, do you know off the top of your head or approximate what it costs to have a spare pump in case that would happen?
Well, the challenge is you can't purchase the pumps that we have in uh lift station number one anymore.
No, but I mean for the current go ahead with the retrofit or whatever we would be replacing it.
Adding an, an additional on the shelf type.
Yes.
Uh, that's a good question. I didn't actually look at the details. I, I, I believe they are anywhere from a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay.
Don't quote me on that, but it is.
And uh, without knowing the capacity versus uh one and two. I guess with the pump failure. Uh, even if we had to have one sitting on the shelf somewhere, that would be the worst possible thing that could happen or the generator failing, I guess, if there was a substantial, but uh. It wouldn't matter which scenario we had, if the generator goes on both, you're done. Um, so, okay, thank you very much.
Counselor. Further discussion, Counselor Fazio, Counselor Fazio? Uh, no, still discussion, just discussion. Um, I just have, have a few questions. Do we, the capacity of the pumps that we have now versus what's proposed? Is this an equivalent? Is it an upgrade?
It would be an upgrade.
Do we have, do we have an idea with what type of like percentage wise roughly for an upgrade?
Uh, currently we have twenty-five horse pumps and we would be retrofitting with retrofitting or uh the new would be uh thirty-four.
But my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, I've never seen the station, but that there's three lines that actually go from this pump station. To the actual wastewater treatment plant and now we're only going to be utilizing two of them?
No, there's actually two force mains.
I'm sorry, is there's two, only two force mains?
Yeah.
So we're just using the existing force mains? So when I looked at this and just like Counselor Buckley, I compare the two and, and the only. Real difference that can be seen from this is, is the actual, um, whether you put the new fiberglass. Tub in or whether we fix up the uh concrete uh, one that's there now. It certainly would be helpful to really know the condition of the concrete that, that's there. I mean, the years of the. I just saw, I just, I just, I just. Sulfuric acid that's in there attacking that concrete. Or is it just some surfit, surface damage? Um, you know, are we gonna, when they start to replace the pumps, find out that we're gonna have to go back to stage one and replace the whole? The whole um lift station itself?
There, there was a conditioned assessment completed. Um, there are areas that will require some uh growth filling as well as uh finishing of the. Uh, the inside of the wet well itself. Um, it'll be resurfaced.
So they felt it was, it was uh repairable?
Yes.
Great, thank you. That's awesome. That's, that's a good. Um, the. The other equipment here, there are just a few things. Um, if we were to go with option one. And I mean, I, it's probably just, uh, you just put, didn't put it on here, but when you say replacing the electrical kiosk just with switchgear. You're talking about the whole electric kiosk controls, ventilation, switchgear, you're talking about the whole.
Correct.
Everything.
The current one is uh virtually run.
Yeah, I've seen that one. And then the, the other question was, so the equipment inside. Is there, there's, is there, it sounds like there's flush valves in there or a mixer. Is that, is all that equipment going to be replaced?
Yes.
Option one?
Yes. Okay, so the, there's flush valves that are uh on the exterior. Um, so the, essentially the, the idea is, is that. All the main components, uh, other than the pumps, of course, will be outside, so it'll be on the top instead of inside. And then uh, the uh, the plan is to put flow meters in a manhole uh at grade uh just beside the existing lift station.
Okay, so again, so, so with lift station one, I just, just wasn't too sure on that one there. So the only difference between the two is literally the container that we have.
You know, a container and the excavation, the excavation, de-watering.
Which would, which would, yeah, that's correct. Okay, thank you. Further discussion, ready to call the question, call it, actually, sorry. Uh, there's not a motion on the table here. So motion, I would move um, option one, um, to retrofit lift station number one. As detailed in the sanitary lift station number one replacement report dated January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. With an assembled engineering team of welder engineering, LLP, want to be engineering and geotech west. Engineering at a cost of up to one million, one hundred and twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars to be funded from sanitary sewer DCCs. And sanitary sewer reserves. Ready to call a question? All in favor of option one? Counselor Buckley. Myself, uh, motion fails. Opposed. Number one, opposed. Okay, so opposed is Counselor Jackson, Counselor Vidal and Counselor Fazio. Option number two. So we move to replace lift station one as detailed in the sanitary lift station one replacement report dated January seventeenth. Twenty twenty-three with the assembled engineering team of welder engineering, LLP. What Hannibal B, sorry, engineering and Geo West Engineering. At a value of up to two million, three hundred and ninety-two thousand five hundred dollars to be funded by sanitary sewer DCCs. And sanitary sewer reserves. All in favor? And opposed. Supposed by mo- motion passes, opposed by Counselor Buckley and Mayor Wood. Next item. Corporate officer.
Uh, the next item is the report of the community services manager regarding the council remuneration policy.
Move receipt, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry.
Uh, would you like me to deliver the report, your worship?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. At the January sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, regular council meeting staff was directed to review the council remuneration and expense policy regarding remuneration mileage, meals, conference coverage and provision for village cell phones and laptops. This policy was last reviewed on October fifth, twenty twenty. And the provision for the cola adjustments for council remuneration came into effect on January first, twenty twenty-three. Staff was uh only able to perform a high level remuneration comparison based on communities with similar populi, population size. And operating budget of the community, number of staff, geographic size or scope of services were not considered. Other variables that contribute to overall remuneration include training, conferences, access to extended health benefits, premium allowances and technology allowances. Uh, there is a bit of information attached here for you, but for a more fulsome review, a task force could be established as recommended by the UBCM. Guide on developing these policies. The recommendation is that this report be received for information.
Thank you.
Move receipt, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
And then I'll, I'll have something to say after it's been passed.
So, so receipt, so we're just going to, uh, let's just go into the discussion.
You want discussion? Because I'm, I'm gonna make a recommendation. So do you want to receive first?
You, you, yeah, no, sorry. We've, you've moved receipt.
Yeah.
So let's just go into discussion.
Okay, I'll leave that first.
Yeah. So discussion. Any discussion? No. And so I'll call the question, all in favor? This is just for receipt. Just receipt. All in favor for receipt? Yes, yes, so passes unanimously. For receipt. And Counselor Fazio.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to um. Make a recommendation that staff prepare a new. Council remuneration expense policy. Um, and bring it forward hopefully for the second meeting in February. Uh, with the um suggested. I'm not in favor of spending money to get somebody to do something I think I'll start. By the way, first of all, I'd like to thank the staff for the background information. It's very helpful, thank you. Um, but I would, my suggestions are that uh. Mayor and council remunerations be increased by thirty percent. Mileage sixty-one cents per kilometer. And the meal allowances be increased to ten dollars per meal. That uh, those counselors or mayor that um. Wish to have a laptop, that we could have a lone laptop and ask him to purchase one. And that an allowance should be made for our cell phones. And that in the conferences that uh the mayor is already. Able to attend all the conferences, including FCM. And that council will be given the option to attend either FCM or UBCM in the policy. So that's the six areas that I'm making the recommendation for.
Thank you, Counselor Fazio. So you've moved that. Okay, so for discussion, discussion on Counselor Vidal, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to our financial officer, can you uh confirm with me? The maximum allowable um expenses for council and mayor?
Um, thank you, your worship, through to counsel, Counselor Vidal. I'm so sorry, I only got half of that. Could you repeat the question?
Sure, thank you. If you, if you're aware, uh, uh, under the current policy, what is the maximum? Um, allowed for uh council or mayor expenses before it is required to go back to council? For authorization for additional expenses? Thank you.
Thank you, I definitely got it that time. Um, so basically the maximum allowable expenses are what's identified in the budget. Um, before it has to go back to council, so um. The, the financial plan um lays out the individual budgets. Um, and that would be the maximum, basically.
I mean, thank you. Since my election to council, I certainly have noticed that uh. I seem to be way more busy than I was uh, say, five or six years ago. And I do know that um. Registration for allowable conferences and hotel rooms have risen substantially since um. This policy was first um adopted. I do support um. Some remuneration for the use of uh cell phones and laptops. Um, I would like to see a, uh, an annual remuneration of uh perhaps one thousand dollars. Uh, to be gone to counselors who use their own uh personal cell phones. Or their own personal computers at home to um conduct village business. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Fazio.
Yeah, just one point, Mr. Mayor, I want to clarify, please. On page eighteen of the yellow paper. From staff through you, one third of indemnity, is that making reference to what was taken away by the federal government, the one third we used to claim?
Can you clarify exactly where you're looking on this page?
Uh, please.
What is it on the bigger?
Uh, this is just excerpt from their policy.
The, if there's one third that we were liable on our. When we were doing our taxes, that's been, that was taken away by the federal government. We're not allowed that anymore.
Thank you. Further, just, further discussion? Being none that. Yeah, Counselor Buckley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before you call the question, could I get Counselor Fazio to read out what his motion was?
Yes.
Yes, certainly. Uh, that um, the staff. Bring back a new uh policy. Council remuneration expense policy, bring back a new one, hopefully for the twenty-first February. Uh, with a um. Remuneration increase for mayor and council thirty percent per year, sixty-one cents for um, your mileage allowance. And I should point out, when we're talking mileage allowance, that's all we get. We don't, we don't, we use our own vehicles. We're not paid for any servicing or any wear and tear of those vehicles. Uh, ten dollars per meal, the loan of a laptop, or whatever they decide. Uh, and allowance for the use of the cellphone. And at the conferences that the council, counselors be given the option either UBCM or FCM.
Thank you. Just. Counselor, sorry, just once I tell server, but I'll go ahead to the corporate officer.
I just wanted to offer that under the current policy, it states that the use of personal vehicles will be reimbursed at the rate set up by the provincial. BC Ministry of Finance travel policy, which is currently at sixty-eight cents per kilometer, and so leaving the policy. With that would be automatically adjusted in accordance with the BC. Policy.
Thank you, Counselor Vidal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mayor Fazio, I'd like to make a friendly amendment uh to your motion that we also include a. Annual reimbursement of one thousand dollars to council uh to compensate for the use of um. Home personal computers for village business.
Thank you, Counselor. Any further discussion? Um, I'll just make a comment. Um, I'm not in favor of any increase. I, I knew what it was when I got into it. Actually, I didn't. It doesn't really matter. Um, I don't support any increases at this time. Um, I will call the question all in favor. With the motion passes with the mayor opposed. So I call for adjournment. Move by Counselor Fassio, all in favor, passes, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.